All right, welcome everyone. Tonight's Board of Education meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Secretary Jazin, would you please take roll call?
All members are present except for Member Wagner.
Colleagues, moving on now to the approval of the agenda. Unless there are objections, the agenda will be approved as printed. Okay, excellent. Let's now move on to our public comments on action items. So those are items that we'll be voting on. What I have here is a green card for a non-action item. So we'll be taking that a little bit later in our meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board tonight on action items? And if there are anyone who would like to address the board, Ms. Roberts has our green cards. Okay, excellent. Thank you, everyone. Colleagues, on to the consent agenda. Unless there are objections, the consent agenda is approved as presented. Very good. All right, colleagues. Now we're on to information items. And first up is we're going to welcome the Waterford Community Coalition up to our podium. And we also have, looks like, a goody bag here for us. So welcome you two. Do we want to do here or the podium?
Oh, the podium.
It doesn't matter. It's totally up to you two.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd just like to take a minute to introduce myself. My name is Amy Kennedy, and I am from the Waterford Community Coalition. And now I'll hand it over to Debbie.
And I'm Debbie Wertz. I'm the Director of the Waterford Community Coalition. So some of you might already have known about the coalition. There's been a coalition in the area, the Coalition for Youth, for many years, run by Heather Halls, who we love dearly and miss very much. I also run the Novi Community Coalition. And when I heard that the Waterford one had dissolved because of lack of leadership, when Heather was unable to run it anymore, I was really sad about it because I grew up in Waterford, went to Waterford schools. So we decided to bring it back. And we are officially, May 2022, our official name is Waterford Community Coalition. So we're pretty much the same entity. There's 21 coalitions around Oakland County in different school districts. We have an umbrella called the Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities. And we are a nonprofit organization. And we look at, you know, our own unique community. We strive to help all citizens, not just the youth, but we want to help everyone in Waterford. And we feel like it really does take a community in a village to help raise our kids. So we do strive to reduce substance use disorders and promote mental health wellness. And how we do that is through creative strategies and programs. And you do have a folder in your little bag that does have some information. It does list all some different programs that we currently are offering. I don't have time to go over all of them, but I do want to say real quick, if anyone has any questions or wants to know more, they see something and I don't really know what this is, please reach out, love to sit down with you and talk to you a little more in length. But basically, we are looking at reducing risk factors and promoting those protective factors, building resilience in our community. And we do that with the prevention framework. We are looking at building parental resilience, building that emotional competence in both parents and children and everyone, all ages. We provide support, especially in time of need. And a lot of that education and awareness on brain development, you know, what our kids should and shouldn't be doing, and a lot of parenting skills, stuff like that. We do really fun creative program, like our Forest Therapy Walk. We have a home visiting program where we actually go into the home and we help parents with parenting skills and reducing any of those barriers. We do a lot with the senior center. We've been really helping them out with preventative measures, keeping their prescriptions safe. We just did a Narcan training there. We're going to be doing thriving through the holiday there. We do partner with the school on, we'll be having our Shop with the Hero coming up, which is a great event. Heather loved that one, and so we are keeping up with her passion for sure. And we are working on that. Last year, we did over 100 kids. It was amazing event. But we also do, like, we have a Children and Change Program at Schoolcraft for children that have gone through a significant change. It's like a 12-week program, working on emotions and learning on how to cope healthy. We do, we're going to be doing a Girls Empowerment Program at Mason Middle School After School for our teenage girls, working with stress coping, relationships, social media, stuff like that. We do all kinds of different education for parents and substitutes. You know, what are the current trends? We have a mock teen bedroom. We, like, again, we have a Narcan training. We actually hand out tangible items. We have deuterabags. We have lock boxes. We're really trying to promote keeping the vapes and our marijuana, our edibles, our prescriptions out of the hands of youth. So we distribute, and everything we do is free, these really nice lock boxes for people to keep their stuff locked up and out of, you know, the hands of our youth. We do alcohol tabs that you can put around your alcohol bottles. Lots of education, what are the current trends, stuff like that. We actually even do these coping toolboxes, which are really cool. So when, all ages, but it started off with kids when you're feeling these big emotions, you don't know how to handle it or regulate. You want to go to that first thing to make you feel better. So we actually have a box that has all these scientific evidence-based strategies inside. Breathing, which is really popular. And we do hand out, we have these little breathing necklaces that we actually mass produce on our 3D printer. But it actually helps to slow down your breathing so you can think more clearly. And it's actually even helping with people to reduce or quit vaping. But in these coping toolboxes, we'll have bubbles and journals and coloring books and stress balls and fidgets, stuff like that. So when they're feeling these big emotions, they can go right to their coping box and start to learn that self-regulation and start to learn what works for them and doesn't work for them. And we're even doing it for adults and seniors, stuff like that. We are funded through our umbrella, through the Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities and Oakland Community Health Network. We do get some funding from them. We were just recently awarded, we applied for the nationally acclaimed Drug Free Community Grant, and we were awarded it. We're super excited. That's actually $125,000 a year for five years. After the five years, we can apply for again six through time, so we can have it up to 10 years. So it's a significant amount of money that we are bringing into the Waterford community to help with prevention programs. We also do get some littler grants, like through Prevention Network, that is housing our Forest Therapy Program. We just did a Forest Therapy Walk last night at the Drayton Plains Nature Center. Beautiful out, it didn't rain on us, it was gorgeous. We're just really promoting wellness, mental health, relaxing, you know, learning how to cope in healthy ways. And what else am I forgetting? I know, I could tell.
Our direct information is the bottom if you want to reach out to us.
Again, we base everything on what the community needs. So we need to hear from people, you know, everyone in here too. We want to hear from everyone. What are you seeing? What do you think the community needs, you know? And then we work together, how can we implement this now? So we really are constantly, we're an open door. We want to hear from everyone, even if it's just your voice. If you want to help us, you know, implement something, that's great. But we really want to hear from everyone, all the different sectors in the community, because everyone's seen a little bit differently. But we really want to, Waterford's a great place, and we want to keep it going. And we really want to make it really healthy and thriving.
If I can point out too, that Debbie has been working with our administrators through Lisa Eldridge and her team, because they know what the needs are at the buildings. And so that partnership is critically important. And Debbie, you've been doing a nice job with that, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate the support and anything, you know, we can do. We are here, that's why we're here. We're very passionate about it. We have our reasons why we're involved with this. I was in education for over 10 years, but I love this piece of it because it's really something that's needed right now, so.
Ms. Amy, thank you so much. It's so nice to hear about sort of all the wonderful programming that Waterford WCC is offering. Really wonderful. Colleagues, do you have any comments or questions? Yes, Member Sutherland.
I just want to echo President Riss's comments. I am so thrilled to meet both of you. I have actually heard your names many times. And I know, I can hear the passion in your voice. Just looking over the materials that you provided us and that you shared with us at the podium tonight, it's absolutely incredible. We love that you're here to help our community. And I know the school's happy to partner with you. And honestly, community members and school as volunteers. So I will be reaching out to see. We used to volunteer all the time for the coalition. I know there's a lot of us in this room that used to do that. And I don't know if you ever need help, but what you do is so important and it matters. And to have that collaboration with the school district is integral to a thriving community. So thank you so much for all that you do for our kids.
Thank you. And yes, please do reach out. Heather's got some really big shoes for us to fill. We're working hard on that. But getting just the community involved is super important, like you said, yes.
Member Patricia, then Member Torres, please.
You'd mentioned you got a grant for $125,000. Is that money just for Waterford, not for the?
No, that's just for Waterford. That's just ours.
But does that mean you aren't going to be doing fundraisers like the food thing that I really enjoy?
We can, we can do fundraisers. And actually, we will be doing a fundraiser. You'll be hearing more about it. We're actually going to be doing a fundraiser and setting up a memorial for Heather in some kind of bench or statue and a scholarship. So we are looking at doing a fundraiser for that. But right now, with, in our ability to obtain those grants, we have enough money right now to carry all our programs. Everything we do is free.
That's what it looks like, though, just a little bit. I enjoyed that.
I know, it was.
Call it a fundraiser, I don't care, just, I enjoyed it. So, thank you.
Member Torres?
The Girls Empowerment After School Program at Mason, that caught my eye. Could you tell me more about that?
Sure, it's a great program. I mean, it's a volunteer program. I'm working with Radhika Isaac on it. When she heard about it, it was at curriculum night. And a couple of the parents came up to me and were talking to me and saying, like, do you have anything for girls? Like, you know, my daughter's having a lot of relationship issues and stuff like that. So I do do this program. I've done it at Clarkston Middle School, Sashaw Middle School, quite a bit. And we just kind of meet, we get to know each other. We do talk about what stress looks like, what does that not look like? A lot of kids say, I have major anxiety. But when we start talking about it, they don't know the difference. A lot of that stress is good for them, you know, prepares them to study harder or work harder. So we kind of talk about the difference and we talk about coping skills. But we really talk about relationships, all relationships, whether it's their parents, their friends. But what does a good friend look like, you know, boundaries, being honest? You know, we do a lot of self-reflection. We do talk a lot about social media and the effects that social media has on us, even when they say that they're not comparing themselves. Their brain is actually still comparing themselves. So I try to get them to limit that, watch who they're talking to and not talking to the sites. And we just kind of build their self-esteem a bit. And we talk a lot about that and kindness and trying to promote them to be kind to each other and reach out to safe, you know, adults that they can talk to. It's been an awesome program. It's like a six-week after-school program.
If they do it at Mason, would it also be open to Pierce kids?
Yeah, yeah, it could be. It might be difficult with the timing. I don't know, getting Pierce there, but we could set up one and do it at Pierce, too. So it's like six weeks long. We're going to do it on a Wednesday, right after school. But then we can set up either another day or after that's done, we could set one up at Pierce for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions here, colleagues?
I just want to add, relative to the grant, I know that Heather and her team worked on getting that grant, I think, three years in a row, if not four. And it was a tremendous application process, and they got denied every time. So kudos, wonderful. We're so happy. I know she's celebrating. I know, that's just a really big deal. So nice work on that as well.
Thank you. Yes, we're very blasted. It takes people sometimes 10 years and don't get it, so.
Yeah.
We are very fortunate.
Well, excellent. We're just so excited that you showed up tonight and were able to give us a little bit of information. I think it's just indicative of having you here and a supportive board and just seeing all the wonderful work that you do, of the importance of these kind of partnerships within our school district. And please come back, because we love to hear.
Oh, we will. Have any time, like you said. Anyone wants to meet more one-on-one, I mean, we are open. We are here. I'm no longer, I'm going to be leaving Novi and actually being here in Waterford full-time. So I am leaving Novi with a heavy heart, but.
Well, we're glad you're, we're glad you'll be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy, and thank you, Ms. Debbie. Thank you so much. A little round of applause, this is great. Well, thank you again. Let's now welcome up Ms. Dixon to talk about our overnight extended student trip to Germany and Austria.
Thank you. I am so pleased to be before you this evening to bring another educational opportunity for our students. We are fortunate enough for our curriculum to provide exposure to our students of a variety of world languages. Students are exposed to the culture, the language, the geography, the people of a variety of places around the world. We're fortunate enough to extend that educational opportunity outside the boundaries of the classroom and across the world. This evening, one of our own, Mr. Jason Frank, a teacher at Kettering, teacher of World Language and English Language Arts, will be presenting a proposal to you for an overnight extended trip to Germany and Austria. Mr. Frank?
Thank you, Ms. Dixon, for that lovely introduction. I appreciate that. First of all, I'd like to say, I've been a Waterford resident since 2000. I've been teaching at Kettering for 27 years. My daughter is a sophomore at Kettering. This is my home. And as I was telling Mr. Donahue, I love living in Waterford. I love teaching in Waterford. And I wouldn't send my child here if I didn't feel so passionately about what we do as a community and as a school board and a school district. So thank you for what you provide us. So, good evening and thank you for having me and welcoming me here this evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about another wonderful travel opportunity for our students. And I thank you for your support. And I'm also asking for your permission to travel. Waterford School District has enjoyed working in a partnership with World Strides for several years, not only with our eighth-grade trips to Washington, D.C. We had a trip to France and Spain several years ago with our Spanish department. And this would be, should I be given permission, our sixth trip to Europe for the German department. Our itinerary includes 11 days and 10 nights. We start in the capital city of Berlin, where students will be exposed to post-World War II history and Cold War history. We'll have a visit to the Reichstag, the German Parliament Building. They'll visit the Brandenburg Gate. They'll see remnants of the Berlin Wall. At the Berlin Wall, students will learn about citizens of Berlin who tried to escape. We learn their stories. And in those various places where the students are at, we tell the stories of those people who tried to escape. So we do a lot of in-classroom-like activities, but out in the city. We'll also, in Berlin, have a chance to visit the Olympic Center, where the Germans hosted the 1936 Olympics, where Jesse Owens won several gold medals. From there, we travel by coach to the city of Munich, where we continue our conversation on World War II. We visit the concentration camp at Dachau. Very, very powerful experience for our students. Every time I take my kids to Dachau, I've always been impressed, A, by what they've learned in our community about those events, but the, their emotional sense of awareness when they experience a place like that. Also in Munich, we are just the foothills of the Alps, actually. We'll visit the fairytale castles of King Ludwig II. And from there, we travel to Salzburg, home of the family von Trapp. Many of you may know that the Sound of Music was filmed in the city of Salzburg. It's also the home of Mozart. We'll visit Mozart's birthplace as well. And then we finally conclude our tour in the imperial capital of Vienna. Vienna was the capital of the Habsburg Empire for over 400 years. It's very much an imperial capital today. And students will have a chance to see someone's royal palaces, see works of art, for example, The Kiss by Gustav Klimt, one of my favorite pieces. And so it is an educational whirlwind opportunity. For the price of $5,700 approximately, depending on when students enroll and so on, students will enjoy three and four-star hotels that are centrally located, full breakfast and dinner every day, air travel, round trip, including land travel, so the motor coach, subways, buses, and so on. Entrance fees to all museums, paid private tours for the local guides. We'll have with us on staff 24/7 a fully bilingual member of World Strides Tour Group. And included in our package is the full protection insurance package, which really came in handy during the COVID period. That will allow families the luxury, should they need to cancel, to recoup just about all of their investment. So those are the offerings that World Strides providing. And I hope that you take that into consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
First off, thank you, Mr. Frank, for being here. And thank you for your commitment to Waterford Schools. Everyone knows Mr. Frank. So I'm so happy to have you here and to be able to talk about this. So, Member Torres?
This is awesome. I just love to see that. I think it was one of the greatest ways of learning, is actually doing and having that experience to do this in high school. I think it's just amazing for our kids. And then the opportunity that we can do this again now is awesome. I know World Strides, remembering from when my daughter did the DC trip, I was really impressed with them. You know, I heard good things. I'm confident about that. The rate, about $5,600, $5,700. So will families be able to make payments towards that over periods of time? Or is that, how does that work?
Yes, so as soon as, should a permission be granted, we will hold a parental meeting and then open up the application process. And generally, the final payment will be due around February or March of the travel year. So February or March of 2025. Parents will be able to make monthly payments if they choose. They'll also be given a variety of payment methods through World Strides.
So that would lock them in then, right?
It could. So right now, the earlier students and families lock into these types of programs, the lower the price. And so once we lock in, that will be the price. There are some things that are not included in the costs, such as gratuities for the guides and the bus drivers. But once families do enroll, I'll share that number with families. And then, for convenience sake, we'll wrap it into the price so that I never have to handle gratuities. World Strides will take care of that on our behalf.
Yeah, because I know the pricings are going up. I heard a term for the first time recently. It's called revenge traveling, where it's now 40% more to travel than it was, you know, before the pandemic in that people now are traveling because they couldn't for years. So now everybody's wanting to go, so prices are going high. So locking in that rate, I think, would be a good thing. We can do that. And then, and then I saw somewhere in here where you guys hit the breakdown about, there's like costs, and there's like a $200 fee, or they call it like a travel scholarship or something. But I don't know if there's ever anything, if that's a thing. But I know, like, with the DC trip, sometimes, sometimes the kids, they can't afford it. You know, they offer like a scholarship, you know, in each school or something. Is that something we do?
World Strides offers scholarship opportunities through their program. I do offer opportunities to work with parents should they choose to do fundraising. I do not have the experience to start fundraising programming, but I'm happy to assist those who do. The numbers you're mentioning refer to an early welcome scholarship and an early enrollment savings. I've been working closely with World Strides since 2012. And I'm in the process of asking them to extend that as long as possible because we're waiting for the final decision and the final vote, and that takes time. And so, as it states in your packet, that fee that we're talking about is through November the 2nd. But I'm asking them to delay that as much as we can to give you the period you need to make your decisions.
Thank you.
Member Donahue?
Jason, we talked kind of about the agenda and going and what the kids are going to be seeing. But overall, what's the why? What's the reason for going and doing this type of travel?
Yeah, well, I grew up in Oakland County, and I had a great upbringing. And I thought I knew it all in high school, like many high school kids do. But when I went to Europe on my first high school trip, it had unleashed a passion in me that changed the total trajectory of my life. Not only did I become a world language teacher, I have a passion in travel. And travel allows us, allows, one, to not only take in other cultures and benefit and learn from other peoples, but it forces us to examine ourselves through the eyes of other cultures. And that's something I try to do in the world language classroom, to get my students to think about themselves as others may perceive them from a different point of view. And travel brings people closer together. And we're trying to break down the walls that separate us. Travel can bring people together and see that we're more similar than many people believe. So I'm really hoping to extend what we're doing in our community classrooms to the greater world.
Member Sutherland, then Member Patricia.
Mr. Frank, I just, as a community, we owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude because you go on your own time. And I think, if I'm looking through this, I think there was at least 11 trips that you've done over time through our school system. And providing this truly profound learning opportunity for our kids is one of the greatest gifts that we could ever give a student, to see the world, as you said, through a different perspective, different eyes, being able to. I was just in Dachau, actually, in January. It's the first time I've actually been to that particular concentration camp. And I've read a million books about World War II, and there is nothing that touches you like walking in the same place, walking through the gates, seeing where they slept and where they... There's so much, it is so profound. And you feel it instead of just learning about it. You actually internalize it. And as you said, you can, you start to see the world differently. And I think that is just an amazing opportunity. I know it's expensive. And the fact that you're giving students almost a two-year lead time so that they can raise money if they need to work and, you know, so that those that really do want to participate in this amazing opportunity, you know, have some time to try to make that happen and as well as the grants and other opportunities. So I just want to thank you. I know you've been in front of us many times over these past many years. And it is truly an amazing, amazing opportunity that you give our kids. So thank you, thank you for what you do. And a tremendous learning opportunity. And I just, we just owe you a debt of gratitude.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's very kind. And I really do enjoy very much what I do. I think of those students as my own kid. And I try to care for them in such a way. And this is just an extension of that. I want to provide, not only for my personal childhood, for my children in my classroom, I want to provide all I can. Thank you.
Patricia?
Again, I believe these travel things, I think they're wonderful. My oldest son did the trip to Spain. He still talks about it. It was just, it was good times. I've had it in exchange, too, in Peru. I had a couple, I think they were young men. Terry, how old were the kids from Germany? You remember? Early twenties, a couple of young men for a week or two. And it was, it was very interesting. They had first time to our country, and they spent some time in our house. But one of the things that, again, I don't know how we can do it. You probably don't want it. want it, but to enjoy the food and the culture. And the food is beer, they make the best beer in Germany. We should be able, we have to be able to take a, and sign something saying, but I wouldn't, if they're 18, these, it's okay, they're not, I'm not asking for the schools, but it's for, to go there, you're 18, I think the drinking age over there is...
16 for a beer and wine.
We're not coming there.
But it's part of their culture, to go there and not experience the whole culture. The young men that I had here, they hated our beer. They just, oh, this is terrible. And again, I've had imported beers, I enjoy, but to have them fresh, to have that opportunity, I wish we had some way of signing off, other than it's a hassle for you, because not everyone can do that, and it's all, but it isn't all taste great last filming. Beer is is part of the culture, part of the food. And I would, I would love for the opportunity for someday, if they do that, I'm going. Again, I prefer trips that have palm trees, but I would do this one if if we could, you know.
And maybe this trip could be something that inspires them for more European travel in their own futures, and they can enjoy the very same things that you're talking about, because you're not wrong. It is part of Germanic culture, but for my sanity and to keep...
It would be difficult.
Not to, not to do that.
Okay. Sorry. Maybe it seems like maybe this points to the need for a board trip to Germany for World Strides.
Sign me on.
I think it's a wonderful idea. We should go first to make sure that it's safe.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Frank?
Thank you.
Yeah, so very exciting. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And are we, a serious question, are we okay with that November 2nd deadline?
I mentioned to World Strides that you have a routine in place where you hear information, then you, the month later, you make your decision. So I'm hoping they can extend us the price, but I have no guarantee.
Yeah, do you, do you want us to take action tonight? I think we can modify and make a motion later, if that would be helpful in the process. Certainly don't want to be the reason that kids...
If it were a positive answer, then yes.
How the board feels about that.
Make the meeting sooner.
Right, right. Talk about that one, so, okay. I agree. I would, I would like to make a motion that we add an action item to the agenda.
Do you do that when we get done? Do it anytime.
Yeah, I think we can make a motion anytime. That we add an action item to the agenda after superintendent's recommendation and prior to consideration of certain purchases, to review and vote on the proposal for overnight extended student trip to Austria and Germany.
I would support that. Thank you, colleagues. The motion to take, or to amend the agenda, adding a new business item to approve the proposal for the overnight excursion to Germany, has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions?
I just have a question. So you feel comfortable with everything presented to us tonight? Because I'm looking at, I don't want to rush something this big, because, you know, these are our kids, and they're going to another country, and we know what's out there in the world. But i- if everything in this packet, I was able to look through before the the meeting, is everything that we need to know, I'm comfortable moving forward with the vote. There's nothing else that would come up or any other issues?
Well, I've done my due diligence. I've traveled with World Strides before, and I've gotten all the documentation that the school board has requested in previous opportunities. As you know, everything is uncertain. Our original trip was for 2020, our World War II tour of Europe was scheduled for 2020. COVID happened, and then the war in the Ukraine happened, and I talked to parents, and I asked parents, how do you feel about going to Europe? And this was March of 21, and they weren't, they did not feel safe. So immediately, we postponed it. World Strides was more than gracious to postpone it yet another year, and some families had to make choices to leave the trip, but that did a lot of opportunities for new families to join the trip. So I feel confident in my research and the information I provided for you this evening.
Yeah, so nothing would change between now and the next meeting? I mean, I feel comfortable with everything. You're very experienced, I saw all the trips you've gone on and listened to tonight, so I mean, I feel comfortable.
And real quick, and we can actually revisit this, because right now, the motion is just to amend the...
Right. I just want to make clear that that we don't take this lighthearted, that we, as a board, you know, these are our kids, we're sending them to another country, we just, we want to, obviously, they'll make it feasible for them to go.
Sure. Thank you. Member Sutherland?
And I believe it's always a case with this organization and any travel organization, that if, for some reason, one of the countries that you're traveling to ends up on the US's do not travel list, it's immediately, yeah, I mean, it's covered, and the insurance covers it, and you know, there's no harm, no foul.
Correct, correct. Yes, and World Strides does have an extensive policy for a student, for example, that needs the medically lifted home, or have a parent brought to Europe to to meet the needs of their child. That's done at World Strides' expense. But being a a community member, a teacher, a father of a student, I have no interest in taking my child on a trip that I'm not, I'm not comfortable with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other comments or questions regarding the proposal to amend the agenda this evening? Okay, so all those in favor of amending the agenda to bring to new business the proposal for overnight extended student trip to Germany, any signified raising of your hand? Motion carries six to zero. We will take that up when we come to new business. Thank you, colleagues. Okay, let's now welcome up Assistant Superintendent Elka for our information item on our food and nutrition services. I believe Director Mr. Williams as well.
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I want to start with an exercise. So if it resonates with you, I need you to raise your hand. If it doesn't, don't participate, okay?
I didn't study.
You don't need to study, Rob, and you should raise your hand on everyone.
Okay.
So how many of us ate breakfast today? Raise your hand. Lunch? Dinner? Okay. So according to the USDA, there's over nine million kids that go hungry on a daily basis in the US. So just put that in perspective.
How many?
Nine million. My name is Michael Williams, I'm the Food Service Director for Waterford School District, and this is our food service update. We're going to talk about our participation and the numbers that we're accumulating because of our participation. We're also going to talk about our menu and the new items that we've implemented on our menu. I want to shine the light on my staff for making it happen. Also, we're going to talk about our outreach and how we communicate with our parents, our staff, and our students. And lastly, we'll talk about our impactful projects that we have going on. First, I'd like to talk about participation by the numbers. As you all know, we are running a program, it's called Michigan School Meals, that allows us to provide meals at no cost to the students, both breakfast and lunch. And with that comes with a new document, it's called the Education Benefit Form, that takes place of the Free and Reduced Application. As you can see, we've received over 4,000 applications to date, and that number's big because that that application helps fund some of our grants, like Title I and 31A. Below that, I had compared, I have a comparison of the past three years, including the current year of September, the first month. And as you can see, with breakfast, our numbers are consistent, because we have been running universal breakfast, which, again, allows us to run, allows us to have the kids eat breakfast for free. But if you look to the right, you can see that the lunch numbers tell a different story. So the first year comparison, we were still in, what is that, 21, 22, we were still in COVID, which means we were allowed to provide meals at no cost. The second year, 22, 20, oh, I'm sorry, 22, 23, lunch, you can see that we had a major drop off, and that's because it was our first year out of COVID, and we resorted back into the regular NSLP lunch program, which means that we went to free, reduced, and full pay. Okay? And the last year, which is the current year, is what we're most proud of, because it tells a story. Yes, in comparison with the first year, we are providing meals at no cost, but as you can see, the numbers are different, which means that our participation is increasing, and I attest that to, one, our menu options, our brand new menu options, the quality of our food, and the consistent staff. If you look below, those are meal counts by the year, and if you look at the current year, if we continue on our trajectory, we would outpace the past two years. What's cooking? Everybody wants to know what's cooking, right? So these are a few of our new menu options that we've implemented this, actually, between last year and this year, and I have to say that the kids absolutely love them, my staff loves cooking it, and again, participation and the numbers show. So first, we have our Wing Wednesday, Waterford Wing Wednesday, and that's our own rendition of Buffalo Wild Wings, and it's by far the busiest day of the school week, okay? Number two, we make fresh breakfast sandwiches in our secondaries every morning, and the kids absolutely love them. Three, it's an elementary school favorite, it's the chicken and waffles, and the kids line up, and they go up for seconds and thirds if they could. And four is a lot of the administrators' favorite, too. It's the sugar-free frozen yoghurts that we have at the secondary, secondaries. Before I start this, I want to say by that without my staff, there's no me, okay? And these are pictures of some, not all, of my staff, and these are the people who make it happen every day. We have 18 locations, 70 staff members, and we serve over 9,000 meals a day. My staff loves what they do, they do it with a passion, and their main mission is to make sure that they provide our our students with the most nutritious meal on a daily basis. Our outreach, we have different avenues in providing information and reaching out to parents, staff, and students. One that I'd like to talk about tonight is our student lunch surveys, and what that consists of is, we pick two to three new menu options, and we take samples to the secondaries and have the students try them at lunchtime, and in real time, they're allowed to vote using iPads via Survey Monkey, and ver, on what menu option they would like to see on the next month's menu. The reason I think that this is important, why I love it so much, is because, one, it involves the students, and it gives the students pride that they get to actually take part in what they're eating. And what what we've been seeing is that because they have so much pride in picking what they get to eat, they participate in our lunch program more. And that's what we're all about, making sure that all of our kids eat, but not only that, making sure that we have what they want to eat. Impactful projects. We have some very important projects going on, and that will go on in the future, but one that I'd like to touch on is one that we actually had installed last year, at the beginning of last year, and that's our new combination ovens in the secondaries. Not only do they cook our food at a faster rate to make sure that we're getting our kids through the lines, and they don't have to wait, so they can have more time to eat their food, it actually cooks the food at a better, it makes the food a better tasting, better tasting, and at a better quality. These combination ovens steam, have the ability to steam, air fry, bake, and smoke, and trust me, we've been using it all, okay? And the food quality has skyrocketed, and not only from suggestions and commendation from the students, but our staff have been partaking in ordering. We have a staff lunch order form, and the staff has been given, raving about everything we have to offer to as well. One, impactful, I wouldn't call it a project, but it's a thing that we were, we're looking to do in January, since it's Board Appreciation Month, is invite you guys to one of our schools. Rob, I know you're coming. Invite you guys to one of our schools for lunch. It'll probably be on the Chicken and Waffles Day, so you guys can see how that is. We don't have as far as the date of the time or anything like that, but we would be proud to welcome you guys to one of the schools, so you can try out the lunch, speak with the students, even speak with my staff, so you guys can see exactly what we do and how we love what we do. In conclusion, I want to say that our students are our future, and the reason this is near and dear to my heart, and I'm, I'm speaking from my staff's heart, because I talk to them every day, is because we know that one way that we can empower our students is to make sure that we provide them the fuel they need to get through their day, whether it's academically or athletically. And it starts in the schools, it's it's at home, but they're at school with us from morning until the afternoon, and we have to make sure that we're providing them the fuel they need to get through that day. And one thing that I want all of us to think about, when we're sitting at the table next time, and we want to complain because it's a meal we don't want, or we're complaining about who cooked it or how it smells, just remember, revert back to what I started with at the beginning of my presentation about those nine million kids on a daily basis who don't even have anything to complain about. Thank you.
Do you guys, oh, do you guys have any questions? Colleagues, more questions we have from Mr. Williams? Member Jocelyn?
You know, I just want to say, we're so thankful to have you in our district. Never have I seen somebody speak so passionately about food and about our kids, and actually what they want. Because, you know, so many times I know that I would pay for lunch, my kids would come home, and they'd be in the pantry, like, well, didn't you eat at school? And they're like, eh, it was gross, I didn't like it. And, you know, and clearly, they love it, everything up there looked delicious. So thank you so much. I mean, you just contribute to our high test, higher test scores and, and, you know, our kids, and we really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Member Torres?
I, I agree, the food and the nutrition is such a huge part. I think that's one of the things the pandemic taught us, was that, you know, one of the first things that we did as a district was, how are we going to feed kids? And I think we, I think we got out about 400,000 meals in that year, drive-through setups, and volunteers, and food service workers, and, because it was, you know, those nine million kids, you know, some of them live here in Waterford.
Correct.
And we had to figure out how we were going to get them meals, so. But I, I do, I really appreciate the work that you're doing. While you were speaking, I pulled the menu up here, and I think it's so cool, I can look, and my kid's going to eat Fruit Cup in the morning for breakfast, you know? And my daughter, she's not one, you know, to eat in the morning, you know, trying to get a, eat a bowl of cereal, but then when she gets to school, she's hungry. And there's that option, you know, she can, and a lot of times, she says, you know, the line's long, you know, that's a good thing, because all these kids are eating.
Yeah, we're going always to protect the lines and make sure that the kids get through fast, too.
But she, yeah, and she, she enjoys the food, and she's, I think she eats lunch at school spot every day, and she's a picky eater. So, yeah, because I even told my wife, I said, we're not making, it doesn't seem like we're making lunches anymore, you know? But, I mean, you have a vast array of food, you have, it's accessible, the menu to the families, we can look it right up, you have it separated by Stapansky, the elementaries, the middle schools, the high schools. As a parent, you can jump right on and look, and it's such a huge part of the educational process, like Member Jocelyn said, you know, this is, this is what's helping our kids get their academics, they're filling their belly, and they're able to learn.
Correct.
So thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for being so passionate about about this.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Member Pruschuk?
I'm just about all for that, I had a turkey. You knew there was coming, so don't be, you know...
In November. Coming in November. Yes.
Okay. Chicken, but it took sample those, the sauce that he made, it is wonderful.
November.
Right in my night. Did we put it out when it is, let Megan know?
I'll make sure you get a special...
It'll be at the board member.
Today. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm excited. Wow. Hungry now?
Thank you for everything, Mr. Williams. We really, we really appreciate your hard work, but we also just appreciate when you show up and let us know about all the great things happening in the department. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate it. All right. We're now going to move on, colleagues, to our Esser update, and welcome up Assistant Superintendent Elka, and we have a little handout, a couple slides here in front of
Thank you very much for allowing us to...
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak about our ESER program. The reason that we present is because the guidelines require an update on the district's plan for using the grant funds at a public meeting every six months. The last time we did do this update was April, and before that was actually March. So we don't have to wait six months, it just depends on our schedule. But in this case, it has been six months, and we want to bring this up. So we have to present this whether we change the plan or not. Our plan has not changed, so everybody's aware of that. We are still using the guidelines and the categories that we set up. That was a result of our strategic plan, which had input from all of our stakeholders. So I'm going to have our Director of Finance, Amy Dagenhart, actually take it over and talk in a little bit more detail, because we don't have to present how we've been spending the money, but I think that is always a good update for our board and our community, how we've been spending.
Okay. The first slide is the ESER II. So ESER is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funding. So that's what all those letters stand for. ESER II was actually after ESER I. We have three of them. We have multiple other grants that fall into this category, but ESER II was $4.4 million, okay? ESER II with the Tidings Amendment allowed us to spend this through September 30th of 2023, okay? So the grant period is over. You did have an additional three months to actually commit, well, you had to commit the funds by September 30th, but you had an additional three months to actually cut the check for them. We are, we do not have to worry about that, ESER II has been completed. So you can see the different categories that we've talked about several times. So when we look at ESER II, we're looking at retention of highly qualified teaching staff. We're looking at purchasing supplies and indoor air quality and sanitation. We're looking at continuity of services, so keeping those services that we need for the school district, maintaining operations, implementing evidence-based activities, addressing learning loss, and providing school leaders resources that they need, along with planning, implementing summer learning activities. So all of those things factor into ESER II. And when I talk about those different things, we are looking at permanent guest teachers in our buildings. We're looking at teacher interns. We're looking at DMB incentives. We're looking at DEI and problem-based learning. We're looking at social studies materials. We're looking at into reading, which, you know, you had approved quite some time ago now, it seems like, nurses, and costs for Camp WSD. So you'll see all of those numbers down there. The last thing is an indirect cost. All grants, not all federal grants, but most federal grants allow you an indirect cost rate. ESER also allowed you an indirect cost rate, and you'll see that down at the bottom, the $96,000. That is for all of those things that are not charged directly to the grant, but are a cost of doing grant work. So for instance, you know, cutting the accounts payable check, cutting the payroll checks, all of those things that there's a piece of, but you can't quantify as exactly being charged to the grant. So that's what that $96,000 is down at the bottom. The next slide is ESER III. And, go ahead, Joan, sorry. You sure can.
I know we're leaving ESER II forever now, so.
Yes.
Just, I'm not sure if there's a way to know, but what portion, if any, of these services, permanent guest teachers, or the planning, implementing of summer learning activities, these kinds of things, what portion are now, were previously covered and are now being absorbed by general fund dollars?
We do have a list of those items that would be ongoing expenses that we will have to look at for being brought into the general fund. Things like, which we've talked about before, into reading, you know, that was a six-year contract, and so when we brought that forward, that was four years that were going to be included with ESER. And a lot of these things, you'll see on the next slide, too. So they're being moved into ESER III.
So just so you know, when it comes to into reading, into literature that we did those six years, we did build that into the general fund budget for those out years. For things like the permanent guest subs, we do have some, but we have been talking about consistently that we're going to go back to what we had pre-COVID. So that is on our list of a recurring cost that we cannot continue. So we've had that conversation. So we have a surprisingly short list, because as you've been saying since we started, we really need to make sure we're very careful about our recurring costs. So we have a very short list of that, where we're having that conversation. So for one example, nurse, nurses, we started with multiple, we're down to one. We have decided that this was a very good opportunity for the district to continue, because they help with plans of care and training. But we've also found another funding source for them. We can put them in our 31A bucket. We also have some one-time grants that we're going to be using for the nurses as they go. So we are looking at those options as well, because we have a few other funding sources that we can extend these. But we are very aware of the few that we have that are recurring, and we're having those conversations constantly. A, can we continue them in another funding source, or B, do we have to discontinue them? So, yes.
So many of these things were just absolutely stellar, and some of them were really specific to the pandemic, whereas some of them, so I recognize that truly that any of it is hard, but I appreciate that you have a list and that you're looking at it. It's really important to our general fund and to our sustainability fund goal, and so, thank you so much.
ESER III is a little over $10 million. You can see here on this slide that there is spent to date, and there is encumbered or allocated. You can see up at the top that they spent and encumbered and allocated is totaled, and what is available still out of the ESER grant, ESER III grant. Again, this grant with the Tidings Amendment goes through September 30th of 2024. So there is basically an additional year on this grant of ESER. You can see again, the buckets that we're talking about are addressing learning loss. This grant had some additional strings attached to it, and so you had to spend at least 20% on addressing learning loss, okay? So over $2 million on addressing learning loss. You'll see there, the curriculum goes towards that, Lexia, Success Maker, Power Up, the new Dream Box that we just talked about recently, and Camp WSD. You can see in some of these other categories, too, that some of these things could be used towards learning loss also. When we're looking at the math curriculum and the Spanish curriculum and science materials for, you know, our elementaries, middles, and highs. So all of those things could also be in that addressing learning loss, but we've currently put them into providing school leaders resources for added needs, to address needs, excuse me. And you will see, too, that there are things that went from ESER II, and they will continue on in ESER III. So just like we talked about the nurses, we also have items in ESER III, such as the Safe Behavioral Interventionists, that you'll see are on the encumbered column. And the reason for that is because we have had different funding for some of these things. So as we've talked about before, with the funding that has come from the state and the funding that has come from the feds, just in different areas and the county, we have had to move things around and amend the plan a little bit as we go. So we have the Oakland County Mental Health Grant that was a two-year grant, $175,000 each year. So last year and this year, 23, 24. And then we've had some other grants, which, there were six of actually, that were done as of 9/30 of 2023. And those are the 23B grants. Those 23B grants were for credit recovery, before and after school, and summer school. Then there was also the 98C grant, which was also for before and after school and addressing learning loss, such as summer programming. And what was the last one? Oh, that was, that was the 323Bs, the 98C, and ESER II, totaling $6.1 million that was expended by September 30th, 2023. You can see also on ESER III, there is still, you know, purchase of supplies for wipes and sanitizers and different things like that. There's also purchase of educational technology, Chromebooks, calculators, which we talked about, Google Workspace and Illuminate. If you have any questions there?
Colleagues, any questions? Member Sutherland?
Sorry.
That's okay.
First of all, congratulations on being done with ESER I. And ESER I. Right? So I forget, how much was ESER I dollars?
That was $1 million.
$1 million, so not a big deal.
Yeah, but that one came.
Big deal, super happy to have it. But this one's $10 million, so. I know. It is a big deal, it's just one-tenth of the big deal that this one is. So relative to ESER III, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember that, we had to have it all spent, but we don't have to have all the invoices in until 2024?
So we have to have our plan in and approved by September 30th, but they do allow you, if you, let's say you order Chromebooks and they don't come in until October, that's acceptable. But if it comes in in January, tough, you're out of luck. So anything that we're doing, which we've been very fortunate that we haven't had to take that into consideration, but they're making, they're very clear that you can allocate, have it approved, and then it has to be actually purchased, bought, received by December 31st.
December 31st of this year?
Well.
24 for ESER III.
So if it was ESER.
So the 9/30 2024 deadline is that we, what's the difference between the deadline we just passed on ESER III and the one that we will have 11 months from now?
So, so there are two different grants, and each grant does allow us to go to the December of that calendar year. So let's say we hadn't, hadn't actually received everything that we intended in ESER II, we could pay it out through December. But we did receive everything. We did not have anything hanging out after September that we had to pay for. So we didn't have to worry about that. Same thing with ESER III, we have to allocate it, have it approved by September 30th. So example, if we have, like I said, we had Chromebooks that we wanted to spend, they didn't come in before December, we can't go and take that Chromebook money and spend it on something else. So that's where, yes, it's great that they allow us to have that latitude, but we don't feel that's something we ever want to risk, because what if they cancel the order because they just can't get it in? So we're making sure everything that we can do is received and paid for, or paid slightly after September 30th. So if we had people being paid through September 30th, we could then pay them the next month, and that would be okay, because they were included to pay anything that they earned through the end of September.
We're talking of 2024.
We're talking, yes, so ESER III has, goes through December 24, ESER II technically through the December of 23, so.
So it was my understanding, we have one, just over $1 million not yet spent, encumbered or allocated.
Correct.
That does not have to be done by the September 23.
Correct.
It's by September 24.
Correct.
What had to be done by September 23?
That was ESER II.
But it says like ESER III, 9/30 23.
Correct, but ESER II, if you look.
With the Tidings Amendment, if you continue on, it goes through 9/30 24. So it used to be 23, and then they gave us another year.
They immediately threw in the Tidings Amendment. As soon as they approved these, they immediately threw in a Tidings Amendment and said, you can spend it for one more year. Well, we have to watch that, and we have to be aware of that deadline, but from a standpoint of us spending it, getting amendments, getting approvals, it's moot, but we have to, that's something we still have to track for grant purposes.
Okay, okay. It's very strange, they give you two deadlines back to back.
We, since the Tidings Amendment is new, we, this is not something we've had before. We all were asking, because MDE was saying, oh, you have the Tidings Amendments on this, we're all like, hands up, like, what is the Tidings Amendment? And they said that was something they immediately put in as soon as they approved these, they gave everybody another year by this amendment. So that, that made us feel good, but we had a lot of things that we wanted to be sure about it and understand. For example, our GANs, which is the, the grant award notices, have 9/23 for ESER III as the due date. So again, you're going, okay, and they're like, well, we have to do that, because that's what the feds say, but you have one more year to spend it. So it's been a learning curve for all of us on how different this was. I expect that we'll never, never utter the word Tidings Amendment again after ESER III is done, but for now, it is part of the guidance for this.
And so there's no concern with the $1 million that's not allocated?
No.
And you, I'm sure, have a plan?
We have several plans, we're just leaving it out there rather than allocating it, because we know that, we went through very carefully with our plan, allocated amounts for it. We update those amounts as we go along. So for example, we have used more permanent guest teachers than we had originally allocated, so some of that million will be allocated to them. We have science that we're still looking at, there might be a chance that we need some of that. And then the indirect that Amy was talking about with ESER II, we have that option. We prefer not to use indirect. For example, we have the right to do indirect for IDEA. We prefer just to spend it right out, because that's just money that the general fund is spending if we do the indirect. So it was just another way to use money and get that to the district, so we're not losing any advantages.
We're sure going to miss these ESER dollars going forward.
Yes, yes.
So appreciate all the work that went into, all of the accounting associated to all three of those ESER funds is extraordinary.
Yes, it's, it's a lot, especially with.
On top of everything else.
The number of account numbers just alone that, that have to be built by function and object.
Yeah, that's unbelievable.
Yep. So the last slide is where we were with ESER II. So when we brought this the last time in April, our goal was to be spent by June 30th of 2023. We only had that last $96,000, and at the time, we even said, we thought there might be about $100,000 between July and September that we would need to spend. That $96,000 in indirect was for that. So as you can see here on the first line, ESER II is completely funded and requested and complete. Then ESER III, you'll see on here, WSD's goal, our goal is to spend by September 30th, 2024. The committed funds have to be by September 30th, 2024. But again, we also can go through payments to be completed by December 31st of 2024. And the reason that our goals changed between ESER II and ESER III is because ESER III, there are some things that we are using for curriculum that we want to be able to expense that July 1 through that September 30th of 2024, because that is the 24, 25 school year.
Colleagues, any comments or questions regarding our ESER update? Assistant Lindbergh.
Both of you have been so eloquent. I just want to share with the board and with our community, we appreciate all of the grant funds and all of this, but as Member Sutherland mentioned, the hours and the late nights that have been spent by this entire team, but also led by Sandy and Amy, has been incredible. Because as this money's come at us, we've experienced the MDE changing game plans midstream. And also, as more grants have come at us, have been provided opportunities, we've wanted to maximize each one, so it means we move things around. So it has been an incredible team effort to do that. I think it's been an incredible investment for our community. And then on the other side, as we know, we will have to make adjustments. We will not have these types of funds going forward. But that's why we tried to make one-time investments with as much of these dollars as we could, that would pay dividends for years to come.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Member Torres?
Is there any talk at all about a replacement of ESER funds? Because it just seems like there was so much good that we were able to do with this, and the pandemic caused so much havoc that has been within our educational communities for years to come.
I can, I can speak to that. In a legislative meeting we had, oh, it might have been last February, we were told by Congresswoman to not expect these kind of dollars anytime again in our lifetime. I'm just quoting her, I won't say who it was. But to answer your question, I don't think so.
The only thing that we have heard rumblings about is that maybe an extension to the timeline for ESER III, but I haven't heard much about that since.
Yeah, we heard that initially, because some people were spending it on construction projects, and of course, that is very difficult to get going and get done. We have. We have chosen not to do those kind of projects, we are fortunate to have a 2020 bond to do those projects in, so we have made sure that we will be spent out by next year. So we had already planned that out initially, so we're in really good shape with that. Now, would we turn down extra money? No. We certainly have more needs that we could fund with that, but we're not expecting it anymore. Now with the state, we have a lot of categoricals that they've been doing the last couple of years, and we know that not all of those categoricals have been spent out, because not everybody's been able, like the 98C is a great example. We had Deb Cooper go in and put that application in, and she did an excellent job, and we went from $30,000 to $300,000 because people weren't able to get in there. So we expect that we may have a few categoricals that continue on, but they're not going to be big dollar amounts.
So the extension would only qualify for people who haven't spent all their money then, correct, which wouldn't apply to us?
Correct, correct. Now, yeah, we've, like I said, we really spent out all our money, the only thing that would be great if they wanted to add to it, we could pay the additional curriculum that we're paying out of the general fund in the future.
Yeah, I just feel like there's just so much more still ground to make up for the pandemic, but thank you.
Chairman Sutherland.
So we've had an influx of $15.4 million just in S R funds alone, which we now will no longer have. I know you mentioned a shortlist, if we have an opportunity to maybe even just an email on what that looks like, it would be really helpful to know, because I know some of the things our safe coordinator, some of those things, the guest teachers, I can recognize what they are just from verbiage that have been so integral to our everyday life and that we've been paying for with S R dollars, so I'd really like to understand what this means for our general fund.
Yes, so our shortlist also includes options for other funding, the SAFE team is a great example. Where we thought we might have to reduce the number again, we've had a couple of things going on. One is our 31A money, I believe it was 3.5 a couple of years ago, we just got our October state aid, it is 5.3 million. We will be able to absorb that.
Maybe they were dyslexic, but don't tell them.
So, and on top of that, we have the Oakland County that's paying for two years of part of it, and then we have the 31A categorical for last year and this year. So we have these funding streams that allow us to continue with the SAFE team. That is one excellent example that we are thrilled that we don't have to make that hard choice. But yes, we have the list, we'll tell you where we think that we could do it. I always keep using permanent guest subs, because that is one of the hardest ones, that we don't necessarily have another one, but we are looking at different options. Amy and I have been troubleshooting various different ways, and then we're going to check and see if they're allowable, so that we can take advantage of some of flexibility with some of these grants, to be able to do these a couple of years longer.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Just really quick, I just want to echo Superintendent Lindbergh, and thank you for your hard work. I mean, as Member Torres talked about, and Member Sutherland, there's so much money, and we take a look at the list that those monies have allowed us to make investments in, and they have, I mean, they have allowed us to make really transformative investments, they've helped us to pivot towards what we want to do next. All of these reflect our values as exemplified in our strategic plan, and then just the, I mean, the sheer work that you see here is just, I can't wrap my head around it, that's why you two are there, and we just thank you so much for that. The importance of this, I don't think can be overstated, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, colleagues. All right, let's bring Mrs. Davis up for a presentation of awards. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Education, and good evening to the rest of our listening office, or, I'm sorry, audience. My name is Sarah Davis, and I am the Director of Communications and Community Relations here at Waterford School District. I am here today because I'm pleased to announce that my team has won 10 state and national awards. Thank you. Before I go into further detail about that, I would like to introduce my team, who is hidden throughout the room here. We, Wayne Rafter's back there, Kelly Bannister, Wayne Kelly, you're going to embarrass her a little bit. Jane, as you know, is back in the other room hiding, videotaping this meeting as we speak. Chris Burlingame cannot be here tonight, but of course, is also an integral part of our team as our webmaster. So I'm just going to go through some of the details of these awards. The first group of awards that we received, sorry, I wanted to move this forward, was from Michigan School Public Relations Association, otherwise known as ESFRA, and this group focuses on training and resources for school communications leaders throughout the state of Michigan. So we competed for these awards at the state level. I am pleased to announce that we received three awards of merit. The first one was in the audio podcasting category for our W S D voice podcast. The second was in the video category for our W S D Spotlight 2023 Teacher of the Year video. And the third was in the marketing materials category for our gorgeous kindergarten booklet. And I would like to point out that several different departments really helped us with that booklet and provided content for that, which was a key part of our enrollment campaign this past year. We then received two awards of excellence at the state level. The first one was in the diversity, equity and inclusion category for what I am calling our Inclusive Photography Catalog Refresh Project, and I will talk about that project a little bit more later on. Our second excellence award was in the social media category for our alumni spotlight profile that we do. I'm just going to touch on that real briefly. This Alumni Spotlight Series 1 runs approximately once a month, and in it, we profile one of our alumni, pretty simple. But it involves constant outreach and relationship building with our alumni, while also ensuring we're portraying a variety of alumni with not only diverse backgrounds, but representing a diversity in post-high school career paths. So although this project may look easy, there's actually a lot of careful and planning and intention put into it, and we already have a pretty robust social media program, so to receive recognition for an additional social media program that we're doing is very much appreciated. So that's it for the state awards. The next awards we received were from the National School Public Relations Association, otherwise known as ESFRA. They are the umbrella group of state chapters, and they also provide training and resources to school public relations leaders, but throughout the United States and Canada. So we competed for these awards on the national level. Our first winner was our new curriculum investments video, we received an honorable mention in the publications and digital media in-house video category. And again, shout out to our curriculum department, who helped us work with us very closely on this. We all know they're doing tremendous work in that department, and we were honored to even be part of creating a video that highlighted those efforts. We then received an excellence award in the publications and digital media podcasting audio category for our W S D voice podcast, so you'll remember that was also a merit winner at the state level, so two awards for our W S D voice podcast this year. This is a quick refresher, the podcast is now in its third season, has well over 1,000 engagements, is syndicated on two local radio stations, and is available on seven different platforms. Unlike most podcasts, we also have a video component to this podcast, where we're able to help our viewers see the topic that we're talking about firsthand. So here's a recent clip where Scott went out to the high schools and interviewed some of our Link Crew students, this is from our latest episode.
Talk to us a little bit about the most effective strategies in connecting with our new freshmen, our ninth graders.
For freshman orientation, especially the first day of school, we have a series of events that we always do in each classroom, each kid. We take them on a tour of the school, which really helps them, and I think like the activities that make them moving, and like, we have one that you throw a ball around, that was just fun and makes you laugh, and everyone has a good time with that one.
All right. So next, I will talk about the three programs that we won golden achievement awards for. So for all the programs that I just mentioned, in order to receive awards for those, we had to prove that they had great content and great engagement. For the golden achievement award, they had to prove that as well, but we also had to showcase how it wrapped into the district's mission and vision, so we had to show an element of strategy in these projects. To do this, we had to prove that we followed what is known in public relations circles as ARPI, which stands for research, planning, implementation and evaluation, plus provide data and examples to back up our submission. I'd also like to mention that we were the only school district in the state to receive three of these awards, just two other school districts from Michigan, Dearborn and Troy, each received one. Our first. Our first golden achievement winner is the Waterford Y, a video series that you well know, that provides firsthand testimonies from W S D employees and stakeholders about why Waterford School District is a great place to work and develop as a professional. So we're going to just play our most recent example, where we partnered with Township Supervisor Gary Wall, who spoke about Waterford Township, because it's important for us to showcase to prospective employees why living in Waterford Township is a great thing.
Hello, I'm Gary Wall, Waterford Township Supervisor, also a lake manager in Waterford Township. Waterford is the most populated township in all of Wolfen County, the fifth most populated township in the state. We have a big draw with our 34 lakes for recreation for people to come in, and one thing I hear people say all the time, what is it about Waterford Township? Once people move there, they never leave, and it's that type of a community. Whatever you want, they've got it. They said we have beautiful lakefront homes, we have starter homes, we have everything that you would ever need, and not to mention, I said, a top-notch school district.
And only Jane knows the secret of where that drone footage was at. Okay, our second golden achievement winner is our enrollment campaign, Today's Student, Tomorrow's Leader. Just some quick highlights from that campaign is our partnership with Metro Parent, our social media and Google Ads, our updated print and website materials, and of course, our in-person events that allow us to better engage with the community. I'd also like to mention that the success of this campaign is hinged on the collaboration with several different departments. Central enrollment has been absolutely key in showing up and doing the work when it needs done. Computer Services provides all the tech support we need for the events. English Language Development Department provides interpreters. Sweetreads has generously added us to their schedule. And of course, we have worked extensively with Andrea Bratton at Stapansky to be part of her highly successful family engagement nights, as well as advertising to those families. All of these components added together have now created an award-winning enrollment campaign for Waterford School District. And last, the third project, what I'm calling our Inclusive Photography Catalog Refresh Project, won the third golden achievement. You'll recall this won an excellence award at the state level, so two awards for this one is a big winner this year. And I'm just going to talk about this project really briefly here. There you go. So when I started here in 2021, due to COVID, in the past two years prior, either being virtual school or students wearing masks, the amount of usable photos we had of our students was almost nothing. And you can't do good communication work without good photography these days, photos are involved in everything. So we knew that this project of updating this photo catalog was sorely needed. We decided that while we were going to do this, we were going to make sure the picture taking was very intentional, and that we would obtain photographs that accurately portray the makeup of our student body, so that pictures were, when pictures were used for district promotion, we were creating an environment where all students felt welcomed. We searched for a local photographer, and we found Mari Lotosis, who I think most of you know. She stood out because her photography is amazing, and even better, she's an alumni of W S D, and I think we should probably profile her in the alumni spotlight soon. Once we secured Mari, we reached out to a variety of buildings, in programs, principals that we thought would adequately portray our student and staff population, and asked them to sign up for a three-hour time slot, where we would come in with Mari and take photos of the students and staff. And for the next several months, that's what we did, we just took photos. After the pictures were taken, we sent them back to the principals to ensure that none of our students were on the do not photograph list before we used them. Then we divided them up into a variety of categories, so that they're easier to find when we need them. I'd like to stop here for a second and really acknowledge, again, the program leaders and the principals who worked with us on this, even though we told them we would not be disruptive when we came to school, the bottom line is when you go into a school to try to take pictures, you're going to be a little bit disruptive. And also, I know it took extra time to comb through the do not photograph, so we appreciate that collaboration as well. To this day, our new collection is divided into approximately 30 categories, such as playground, technology, math class, and has over 2,500 photos that showcase our amazing and diverse students in both general and special education settings. We captured learning in the classroom, as well as staff and student culture. Since we've completed this project, the photos have been used to help our department accurately showcase our students in dozens of projects, which you've seen a few here, everything from flyers, hiring promotions, social media posts, videos, website, community presentations that Scott has done, and of course, our inspired Waterford Welcome Wallet query that we started as well. Now that we have this solid base of pictures, community brochure, we will continue to staff talents to keep the catalog update ongoing, and our plan is to continue to use these photos in as many projects as possible. So that is it for our 10 state and national awards. I'd like to circle back real quick, and again, thank Jane, Kelly and Chris for their tireless work ethic and attention to detail on these projects. We are a small but mighty team, and I hope that they all feel proud tonight. I'd also like to point out that it would be difficult for us to win these awards if there wasn't already great work going on in this district for us to promote. The videos produced, podcasts, topics discussed and social media content created are all highlights of what other departments are doing, so we thank you for that collaboration. Again, thank you for your support, for allowing us to come up here and to showcase what we're doing, and for your support all the other times as well, we thank you very much.
It's amazing work, Mrs. Davis. Colleagues, comments or questions? Member Torres.
I saw you had LimeWire up there, so can I listen to the W S D podcast on LimeWire? Okay.
It's on YouTube, yeah, if it's, it was one of the apps, is that what you're talking?
Yeah, I saw the app on there, because I have that on my phone, so convenience is easy, and driving and just popping on.
Yeah, any of the apps up there, it's on there.
Okay, good. And then, so the pictures, I love it, so we just, they just, we're allowed to take pictures and use them, they just, we don't have to have the parents sign a waiver, right? It's just.
No, we did, that's what we went through after we took all these pictures, and made sure that all of these students had signed do not, where they're allowed to be on them.
Okay, so that's what I was saying, is it an opt-out or opt-in thing?
Um, they opt, I think they have to opt out.
Okay, so then we could take pictures of kids, and we just had to make sure they're not on a do not photograph, which is probably not a lot of kids, right?
Yes, there's more that are, you know, that allow it than don't, but we still need to check.
But I think that's great, I mean, I think that allows us to tell the story of our district, the diversity of our district, the real students of our district, you know, and I think it's awesome that we're able to do that and have all these photos of our kids.
Member Sutherland.
Holy cow. Absolutely incredible stellar work to you, Sarah, Jane, Kelly and Chris Burlingame, and when you say small but mighty, big emphasis on the mighty and on the small. I mean, so few people, but doing absolutely incredible work. Your presentation was so spot-on perfect, because you highlight that your. because you highlight that you're showcasing what other groups are doing. You did, I mean, just such a beautiful job of letting us see the beautiful content of the work that allowed you to receive these 10 awards. We, as a district, could not be more proud of the work that you're doing and, and of the work that you're showcasing. Because it's a, it's a story, I know our colleague Kristen, she's not here, but it's one of the things, she's like, "We've gotta say more great things about Waterford." We've got, and it's so true. And, and you have gotten that word out in so many amazing, different venues and ways in every possible social media. You know, your, your content is just absolutely stellar. And so I just, I'm gushing, I'm sorry. I just am so proud of the work that you've done. And we are so lucky to have Waterford being showcased in the way that it deserves by you and your staff. So thank you so, thank you.
Sir, I didn't, I guess I've never thought that you'd need a photo catalog. But it makes perfect sense. And these pictures are just stunning in, in both their kind of simplicity. But what's happening there is just, it's amazing. And you can see, you can see the wonderful experiences our students are having in our schools, the dedication of our staff and teachers, all of the extracurricular opportunities. I mean, from the swimming and the wrestling, the wrestling pictures is full of drama with the shadows. It's just amazing. So I'm so glad that you have these, and I'm so glad that we get to see them and all that you're, you're putting out and helping us tell our, tell our stories. So thank you, thank you.
I'm so sorry, just to follow up. I forgot to thank Mari as well. I know the photography that went, and I know she doesn't technically work for our district, but she is everywhere in Waterford, and are just outstanding photos as well. And to all of the students and teachers and staff members that were part of it, those are just amazing, amazing. So thank you for coordinating that. Thank you to Mari.
Thanks. And I'd like to point out the athletic photos are from Jeff with JDN Photography, and he does the athletic piece of the, of the photos. And he does a stellar job as well.
Colleagues, any other comments or questions here regarding our 10 awards? 10? Member Virtusha, please.
I would like to thank the board. It was just a few years ago, we didn't have this. We didn't have a PR person. You know, again, we have the money, we've been able to find it. But without, you know, the, the, us up here, I guess, to be able to sell it. So thank you, it's not about us. But for my, my fellow board members, thank you for allowing this us to have.
Yeah, thank you.
That we can do this. It's not food, but it's still pretty good.
I think.
No, I can't offer any free food after this or anything.
You can, but it's.
We'll give the awards afterwards.
I think Rob makes a good point, though, because I know when Scott came on, this was one of the things that he was selling the board on. And I wasn't fully on board with it. And I said, "All right, well, you know, we were gonna try it for a year." And then the pandemic happened, and we realized how important information was to get the word out. And so I think like Rob's saying, we found a way to make it, you know, continue on. And I think it's such a huge, important piece that we needed. So yeah, I think it's fantastic. And, you know, thank you, Scott, for really, you know, thinking that through when you came on as superintendent, and the board for supporting it, and all the hard work of our staff, so.
And probably, it's probably important to mention just the size of our kindergarten classes. I mean, we're seeing, we're seeing this work pay off. Because, I mean, it's hard to cut through all the noise on social media and that we encounter on our phones. And so it has to be focused and targeted and intentional and a great story. And we're seeing that, we're seeing that pay off.
And people are hearing about it, too. I was contacted by a national communications magazine who had heard about our campaign and wanted to learn more about our Waterford Welcome Days and our outreach to the community. And so we did an interview about that. So I'll share that article with you when it's out. It won't be till winter time, but.
Thank you again, Sarah. Thank you again. All right, excellent. Okay, colleagues, we're on to information item F. So this is our 2425 School of Choice Resolution. So colleagues, included in tonight's packet is the proposed 2425 School of Choice Resolution for review. There is no change to the resolution, which would permit the acceptance of applications for JK and kindergarten, and up to 20 students entering grades nine through 12 and accepted into the Waterford STEM Academy through the application process. The recommendation will be presented for board approval on November 16th. If members have questions prior to our next regular meeting, please feel free, of course, to reach out to Superintendent. Any comments or questions?
Comment.
Get Member Torres.
So I know there's not a huge appetite for school choice students, you know, amongst this board. There hasn't historically. But yeah, I just would challenge us to think outside the box a little bit. I, I know we're, before, we didn't used to have those spaces open for the STEM Academy, which I don't know that we always fill them up, but I think that's a good thing that we offer it. And just in other ways that we could try to get more students and the opportunity to get a Waterford education. I know all of the school districts that surround us have, have a more open plan. And, you know, I, I think about like with, with Waterford, right? We, we have a portion of our community that is, is not our school district. And, you know, maybe that's something we could do. Where Waterford students that, that live in a different school district but are in the boundaries of Waterford Township, that we open space for them. You know, I know that, that happens. But something that would allow us to have more students from other, that, that would choose us, from other districts, to, to come and get that Waterford education. We have so much to offer as we see. But I just wanted to throw that out there. We don't have to debate it or talk about it. We can discuss it in between. But I just wanted to be said that I would like to see something more added that would allow us to, you know, provide an opportunity to more students to come into Waterford School District. Thank you.
Torres, any other comments or questions? Okay, let's welcome back up Assistant Superintendent Elka. Talk a little bit about some generators.
Thank you very much. I am joined by Elizabeth Cucci, who is our Director of Instructional Service and Technology, to talk about the generators that we are asking you to approve at the next board meeting.
So it is hard to follow Sarah with a generator conversation, but we will. So the generator bid, which includes Covert, if you don't know, Covert is our main hub, which runs our district-wide servers, including key infrastructure, such as phones, security elements, and our technology systems. The generator currently located at Covert helps to maintain these systems, as well as the HVAC within that space. The reason we have an HVAC within that space is to ensure the equipment does not overheat during a power outage. The current generator at this location at Covert has reached its end of life and its capacity. As you know, we have added multiple servers over the last couple of years to run all of these systems. As we add those, that adds to the generator. The generator is quite old, and it is at end of life. So that is one reason why we're coming, bringing this as an evaluation. In addition, we are looking to add generators to our high schools for the purpose of keeping vital communications working when there is a power outage. We're only right now looking at Mott and Kettering because we know those particular buildings are utilized a lot more after-school hours, as well as on the weekends. So we want to make sure we keep those communications open if something was needed. We will eventually potentially look at expanding this, but that's where we're looking at going now. And we know at Covert, we need to replace that. The funding source for this would come out of the 2020 bond, and it is part of our plan within that.
Colleagues, comments or questions? Member Sutherland.
Do we have an estimate of costs? And when will bids be going out? And when will we have an opportunity to see?
So bids will be going out shortly. We do not have an estimate. I don't remember when we were looking at it initially. I believe that we're probably looking at $200,000 for the high schools and more for Covert because of the size of that generator. We, we did an initial estimate of doing all the schools. It was way too high. So we really pulled back and said, "What do we have to do?" We knew we had to do Covert, but we also wanted to do a couple of the schools. We are looking at other funding sources to expand that. We have new categoricals from the state. So we're looking at expanding that and getting more schools to have emergency generators.
Is there a, an understanding of what will be covered when power goes out? Like, I don't even know how often power has gone out in the high schools during a school day. I don't think it's very often. Just wonder the, the need for a generator. Maybe you can help us understand that.
So the power doesn't go out very often, but the problem is when it does go out, we lose phones. That is critical for contacting parents and contacting central office, contacting transportation if we need to make changes and to have students go home early and such. So we're finding that that, that reason alone is what we really want to do, these generators. They are only powered enough for the communication. So we are not getting enough to do anything more than that. It is not.
So it's only gonna power phones?
Correct. Yes, it's only supposed to do that. So we are not getting, this is not a whole building generator at all. Those are over a million dollars. We certainly cannot factor those in. We are doing it so that we still have the ability to communicate within the building and without the building. So that is basically what these generators are for.
I, I'm, what do I know? I, I know a whole house generator runs, depending on square footage and so forth, around $2,000. This is $200,000, so 100 times more. Why for just running phones would it be so expensive?
Do you want to answer that?
I can try. So one reason is because these would be commercial grade. They would also be set up to house, essentially, our phone system runs out of our technical closet. So we have to keep those servers up. So it would also be running that technical closet to keep the phone servers running. That was one reason why, like Sandy shared, we looked at a full building. It would cost us over a million dollars. There is no way we can do that. But we know there are critical points, if a power outage is experienced at a building, that phones will turn off. So we want to make sure we have that vital communication open, especially at our high schools.
So for the bids that went out, did we have some assistance, some technical assistance in ensuring that we had the, the right things going out for bid in terms of?
Yep, so we've worked with Burton Mallow. Burton Mallow is working through the bid process, just like they would with any bond project. So Paul Twig with them and Carla, we've worked through that very specifically, as well as with French and Associates for the design.
So we've actually have an electrical engineer that we work with that has actually looked at exactly what we need so that we are putting these generators out as exactly what we need, not more, not less. So she actually goes and looks at how much power is required and how much power is drawn, and make sure that the generators are just for that. Because, like you said, you could really go a lot bigger. We don't need bigger. We need just those communications and the servers associated with it. We don't need more. So that, that was one thing that she had done for us. And she, she's been working with, with, for example, with Stapansky and things like that to also make sure that we're using, doing the best use of electric, electrical, electricity in there and not overdoing anything that we need in there. So she was part of this whole project as well.
It just seems really expensive for a backup for phones. I mean, that's for something that we may or may not need in a given year. And, and I understand that when we need it, we need it. I do, it's just $200,000 is, again, 100 times what you pay for a whole house, and we're just doing the phones. It's just, I'm having a hard time, but I don't know what commercial costs. So I, I'm just asking the questions and making sure that when we.
And what we'll do is we'll get you some more specifics about the technical aspect and compare it to what a, a house would do. Because the needs that we need for a building are much higher, even though in our minds, it's like, it's phones. I mean, how many? But when we're talking about the number of phones that we have in a building, I know that when we had one of our elementaries go down, it, we lost phones. We lost the ability to communicate. People were using cell phones. We were having to use walkie-talkies. It was very inconvenient at a time that we felt, there wasn't an emergency or anything, thank goodness. But we really felt in the dark with that, and it was very frustrating for our staff. So that's why we wanted to do it at the high school, see how that works. We know that we have a lot of activities 24/7 in the high schools and on the weekends, and this will be very helpful when we have power outages that may only last a couple hours, but very crucial to what we're doing. So that was it, that was why we started with Covert. We started with looking at the whole as a safety issue. And now we, we just had to back it off because of the sheer cost of it. But with Covert, I think it was a matter of what we saw is that really is the backbone to all of our technology. So if Covert goes down and no other building is out of power, we don't have power.
That I totally understand.
Correct.
I just want to make sure I understand what problem we're trying to solve.
Correct.
With a $200,000 investment at each of the high schools. So that, that part I really do want to ask a few more questions about. So just how often does that happen? What happens when, you know, I, I mean, people do all have cell phones is, so the only thing I can think of is automated calls that would go out. So we can talk more offline. I, I just want to make sure I understand what problem we're trying to solve.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
I just want to confirm, these are the gas generators, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so if the power goes out, then it automatically flips?
Yes.
Somebody at my work just built a house, and to put those in is 12 grand in a house. And it doesn't run everything in the house?
I mean, I just, I just did quotes, and it was 2,000 for us. I mean, I just did it, because we don't have one, and our neighbors all did it. Anyway, so I guess it depends on square footage and what you want, but yeah, I understand. I, yeah.
Yeah, so I do expect the Covert one to be more expensive because we are doing more HVAC equipment. What we found out this summer when we had the power outage, we, we were going through a very hot spell that our current equipment just could not keep up with, with the generator. So we know that that will be a, a bigger piece than for the schools because we are trying to do more equipment on it.
As a building principal who just had the power go out last week due to a backhoe finding an undocumented power line in my middle school. Yeah, I absolutely support this and the need for these because, you know, we've got 900 kids in that building. We've got 40-some classrooms and about 135 phones. And so the, the, the power supply that's needed for the amount of phones, plus the PA system, and as it even says in here, it's the cooling systems for the servers that run that. That's a huge, that's the big draw, right, that. And so, yeah, I absolutely understand the, the understanding and the need for getting that size of a generator for each of those buildings, and then obviously larger for COVID Center, because that's the, that's the brain for everything, right there. So, yeah, it's, it's a needed item, absolutely. Especially, I can't imagine even at the high schools, how much larger those are.
Right. And you, what you just shared is perfect. Running that HVAC system is one of the high points that will run off that. We know when, at Covert this summer, when everything went down in that hot spell, and we had no power there, we ran into some issues. And things, once you have servers that are overheating, you can have a major catastrophic event. And we never want to be there, and this will help prevent that.
And that's the big thing is, because right away when the power goes out, everyone wants information immediately. All of those teachers, all the staff members are looking for something from the main office. And so to be able to have that communication is vital for good planning.
Other comments or questions, colleagues? Very good. Thank you both.
Thank you.
So colleagues, that takes us to the end of our information items tonight. We're gonna move on to new business. And we've amended the agenda for the Germanic Culture Study Way to be New Business Superintendent's Recommendations. It'll come after, it'll be 32B. So Secretary Jocelyn will read that second under New Business this evening. So, okay, let's move on now. Secretary Jocelyn, New Business Superintendent Recommendation.
Superintendent's Recommendation 32-23-24, Policy Updates, Volume 36, Number 1 and 2. At the October 5th, 2023 Cow Mating, Wayne Wright, Niola Associate, facilitated the first reading and discussion of proposed policy changes in Volume 36, Number 1 and 2. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions as presented. I so move.
Support. Thank you, colleagues. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? And again, I, I said to Meg, we didn't need to have the big print, the big printed-off version here, because when we did talk about it, I think there were minimal. I think one of the only recommendations was a typo, it's a typo. But if there are questions about things we talked about, we can certainly pull it up electronically and talk about those, but our conversation. I don't remember if there was anything other than that corrected typo. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. Secretary Jocelyn.
Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 32B-23-24. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the propose, the proposal for the June 19th through June 30th, 2025 Germanic Culture Study Abroad Opportunity, organized by World Strides and supervised by Mr. Jason Frank. I so move.
Support. Thank you. Motion has been moved and supported. Any comments or questions regarding the Germanic Culture Study Abroad? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. We look forward to hearing all about it. Mr. Frank, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, colleagues, for being open to take action on that quickly this evening. Okay, we're now going to move on to consideration of certain purchases. Treasurer Sutherland.
Thank you, President Rasic. Superintendent's Recommendation 33-23-24, Security Camera System Bid. It is recommended that the Board of Education award the security camera system portion of the bid to AMCOM Telecommunications Incorporated for a total of $245,150. This includes the base bid of $242,000, alternate number 1 of $2,400, and alternate number 2 of $750. It is further recommended that the Board of Education award the server portion of the bid to Presidio Network Solutions Group LLC in the amount of $77,981.40. This pricing is from REMC, State of Michigan Cooperative. The funds for this purchase are in the Section 97 Flat 2022-23 and 31AA 23-24 Categorical Grants, and I so move. Support.
Thank you. The motion for a security camera system bid has been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Member Petrusia.
Have we used this company before, or is this who's put in our other systems? Will this tie in with ours?
Yes, we have used AMCOM before for security cameras, and yes, so this will work with our existing system.
Carla, thanks for being here. Any other comments or questions regarding Member Sutherland?
What does the timeline look like for the installation of these?
So this will be, as soon as we have the approval from the board, we will issue the PO, the servers. I think the, and Ms. Kuci might know what the timeline is on the servers, but yeah, we're going to start this process. We've already been talking to vendors, so that they're aware that we want to start this process immediately. We know where we want the extra cameras. We've been talking about this for a while now. So as soon as it goes, we're starting the process. So it will start immediately, and as soon as we can get the cameras, we will be installing them.
And what is the total number of cameras?
So right now, I believe we have about 50 going in, but we went ahead and made sure that we got unit pricing and that we knew that we'd have a percentage more, because we had the original, I want to say there was probably 30 to 40 original ones that we knew we wanted to add, and then we've added some since then.
Joan, to help-
We've, we've been assured that the servers are in stock, so as soon as we get the order processed, they will be shipped.
And so the servers, are these recorded and retained for a certain amount of time?
Yes, so the, when we were starting to look at increasing the number of cameras we had, we looked at the servers, and what we found is that the servers were end of life, first of all. Second of all, for the additional cameras we want, we really needed more servers. And that was really why we had to do the bid. The cameras, we probably could have done it piecemeal, building by building, if we wanted to do that, but when the servers were over 30,000 apiece, at that point, we're like, we have to do a bid, we might as well do a bid, we'll have it done, we'll have the pricing, we can move forward with it. So yes, that's going to help us, because as you imagine video, there's a lot of server space that's used in that.
Thank you.
And I think it was maybe in our information, first time we talked about, this also stems from our recommendation, from our audit last year.
Correct, correct. And we've actually, we have the ones that they recommended, which was really probably a handful at the most, but as we were going through, we realized that there was additional ones we wanted, like playground areas, cafeteria, and then we've had a couple where we realized there's a few hallways that aren't adequately covered, so we're going to add to that. So we've added to the list that the security, but it was really impetus to us start the whole conversation.
Again, so just to reiterate, so folks at home are following along, we conducted a security audit, I think about a year ago, year and a half.
March 2022. It's only been a year.
Wow, okay. And one of the recommendations came out of that was really do a close deep dive into our security system, the cameras, camera placement, et cetera. So this follows.
What is the Section 97 Flat categorical?
That, because they had B, C, and D, they called the first one flat. It, it's something I've never heard before, but MD wanted to keep it different from the other four quarter, three other categoricals that they had, so they just called it flat.
So is an MD relative to safety and security? Was that-
So, and this is actually from 2223, they created four different kinds of grants regarding security. 97 was the general one, which allowed us to do training and equipment and cameras and things like that. And then one of the others was to pay for the assessment. So we had already started that process, so this just enabled us to pay for a grant instead of the general fund, which was great, but it also enabled us to get a little bit of a jump. However, we had to wait till basically almost spring to actually get guidance on 97. We had an idea of some of the things we could spend on it, but not all of them. So once we finally got the guidance, then we were, then we started saying, we really need to do the bid for the cameras, because we know that was our biggest piece. But then we looked at the servers, and that added to the whole process, so.
So is the 31AA-
That's the new one. So what they did is, they had a 31A, which was just mental health, and then they had the 97, which was security. In the new year, they combined them into one and just called it 31AA. So, so we split it between the mental health and security in the new year.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Thank you. Superintendent's Recommendation 34-23-24, Waterford High School Site Improvement Bid. It is recommended that the Board of Education award the Waterford High School Site Improvement Base Bid to the bidders and amounts below. It is further recommended that the Board approve alternate number 1 with the bidder and the amount below. The total amount of the base bid and alternate number 1 is $3,294,265. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions?
Very good. All those in- Sorry. Can you, can you just give me a summary again? I'm looking, I know it's new lighting, the parking lot, I think more for the listening public and trying to, because that's just a lot of money, 3.3 million. It's all relative to the parking lot and the lighting of the parking lot. Is that correct?
Correct. So we're redoing the student parking lot in the bus loop that is on the Pontiac Lakeside. No change to the design, like we did with the Kettering new site, but we're also doing new lighting. That's always a great opportunity when you're doing a parking lot to redo the lighting. But we're also looking at the west lot, which is behind the school. We're doing, we're redoing that as well. We are redoing some of the space that's at the south end, where our special ed students go in. We have a new drive and a few parking spots to ensure their safety when they're getting into the building, because we have that buses go by that right there. We have a gate that is preventing people from getting into the west lot, which is behind it, when we're not needing it. So I don't, I think-
Yeah, and then we're adding that bus loop off of the Pontiac Lake for the special education.
That was, yeah, I said that additional-
Yeah, we're doing that. And then we're also on the north lot, we're repairing the cracks and filling, and then we're resealing the whole parking lot area, so.
And what is the funding source? Is this all coming out of 2020 bond?
Correct. This is all 2020 bond. This is as we have budgeted.
Thank you. And there are new sidewalks, too.
Of course. All, anytime you have a parking lot, you're getting new sidewalks along the parking lot.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Thank you. Superintendent's Recommendation 35-23-24, Waterford High School Improvement Bid. It is recommended that the Board of Education award the Waterford High School Site Improvement Base Bid to the bidders and amounts below. The total amount of the base bid with the allowance is $2,319,283. Funds for these bids are in the 2020 bond, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions, please? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Superintendent's Recommendation 36-23-24, Stepansky ECC Abatement Bid. It is recommended that the Board of Education award the Stepansky Early Childhood Center Abatement Bid to Quality Environmental Services Incorporated in the amount of $159,647, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion's been moved and supported. Comments or questions, please? Treasurer Sutherland.
Have we used Quality Environmental Services for asbestos abatement before?
That they're contracted through NOVA.
Yeah, so-
NOVA is who we use.
NOVA is overseeing, is overseeing this. They're, they're our environmental contractor. They have worked with Quality before, and they support the work that they've done, so.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Superintendent's Recommendation 37-23-24, Stepansky Early Childhood Center Dismantling Bid. It is recommended that the Board of Education award the Stepansky Early Childhood Center Dismantling Bid to International Construction Incorporated in the amount of $207,750. Dismantling the current Stepansky ECC and building the new ECC was part of the 2020 bond, approved by voters on August 4th, 2020. Removing the old building will allow for the completion of the parking lot. This work is scheduled for the spring of 2024. The funds for this purchase are in the 2020 bond, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? Treasurer Sutherland.
Thank you. Have we used International Construction before as part of-
Yes, they actually demolished Village.
That's what I thought.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
So how long will it take to dismantle it?
So the timeline goes from April 8th to June 15th of 2024.
April 8th to June, oh, okay.
Member Petrusia?
Do we have a date that we're going to have a Williams Lake Day as a former person that went there, I guess, for people to go in and to look at it before we start with the-
Yeah, we have not set a date yet, but it is on our schedule to set a date, thinking maybe March, because it would still be nice to have it while the school is being used as a school, and you can get the flavor of how it's being used right now.
Again, I don't know if we have anything in there to auction off, or run it at the other, Village, and that would be that opportunity also.
Correct. Actually, tomorrow morning, we have our first meeting to talk about the timeline, reusing anything inside the building, that kind of process.
That was my other question. Is there, like, any memorabilia or anything? Sometimes when we close, when we shut these buildings down, you know, people say, oh, I wanted that, or there was a, you know, a slider thing on a wall that they made when they were little, or their kid did. Is that something that we offer that's, you know, for the community to look at or to reach out to us on?
Well, that'll be part of our conversations, what makes sense. Many times when we've done this, what we do is we get bricks from the building, and then when people ask for them, we just give them a brick. And that seems to be the most popular thing, because a lot of the interior decorations, decor, those kind of things that are part of a classroom, we'll take with us. But that will be part of the whole conversation, so we will add that to our list to make sure that if there's something that we think would be of interest to the community at large that we don't need in the new building, that will add it.
I feel like every time when we do a building like that, I get messages from people, say, hey, could I get in the building? And, you know, my kid made this or that, and it's on the wall, and so that would be nice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Colleagues, other comments or questions regarding the dismantling of Stepansky? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
That was what?
Sandy?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, we're now going to move on to public comments on non-action items this evening. I have two in front of me. Let's welcome up, please, Ms. Robin McGregor.
Ms. McGregor, again, you're well-versed in this. So please be reminded that comments are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public are invited to share comments. However, this is not intended to be a time for questions and answers. Lastly, participants may speak only once on the same topic in our course. Ask to avoid statements that are personally directed, abusive, or abusive. Welcome, Ms. McGregor.
Thank you. I was very hearing all the wonderful things about our district. I've been coming to the board meetings, I missed the last televised one for being on vacation. The museum is still in issue. We have 1,000 signatures. I've talked with the road commission, I met with them. One of their suggestions is to give 51% of the net neighborhood, which is 374 houses, and they will close off the edge at the end of the street. I don't think the district wants that. We're trying to come up with a solution. So please, help us find a, a good medium to help the community and also to help the school district. I've been back there where it says no cut-throughs, but as people are driving through it, 30 miles an hour through the school parking lot, they really don't read the sign. The community's asking for the fence just to be closed when there is no school activity. They're not asking for the buses to stop, they're not asking for any of those things. They dealt with all the construction this summer and for the previous summers. This has been open for six years. Been doing one for the most of my life. I went to school at Kettering, it wasn't open. We have a lot less students. I would hope in the near future, with all these great marketing pieces, that we are going to have more students. So Scott, can we work together on making this happen, please? I believe our district really wants to make a difference for the community, and we have six, well, five, no, six, well, we have bond issues that are proving to make a difference for our community. Let's help these people have a solution to their problems, so that we're not having this conflict. Because I love talking or coming to the board meeting, but I don't like having to talk about this as much. I like talking about the things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Okay, thank you so much again. Let's welcome up Teri Sutton. Hello, Ms. Sutton.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Teri Sutton. I'm the secretary and the total liaison for Waterford Goodfellows. I believe that we didn't have as much participation with the Goodfellows last year as we had in previous years, and I know that there's a lot of new members on the board and within the school district, so I just kind of want to give a real quick summary of who are we? We're a community-based organization whose mission is to make sure that no family goes without a Christmas. We service only those families who go and attend Watford schools, no matter where they live. We collect donations from the community and the Christmas tree lighting. Local businesses agree to be drop-off, as well as town hall does. Other service organizations help us out. We're looking for donations through the schools of non-perishable candles. Anybody who wants to donate toys or gift cards in the denomination of about $10 each allows us to spread them through the families within the district. We traditionally pick up candles from the schools on the day before our giveaway. Families can sign up through the Waterford Goodfellows Facebook page, and we encourage them to do so. There's a four-day window that's 26th to the 30th of November. There's a big note at the top of our page. Any questions can be answered by email through, again, waterfordgoodfellows@gmail.com. Um, information is on the Facebook page, the applications to each family. Each household only has to fill out one application. You do not need to be a member of the Goodfellow page to fill that out, it just has to be a school district family. All the information is on there. We will then respond to them with an email of a date and time and a number, pickup number for when they come to pick up their items. Pickup is at the, um, C A I Building or Parks and Rec Building on Williams Lake Road. It will be on the 16th, Saturday, December 16th. Um, on the 15th of December, we will be going to the schools and picking up candidates. We are hoping that we can come on board support as well as staff members and the school district personnel to encourage people to sign up for it. You don't have to have children, you could be a senior citizen in the community as well. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions through the email, waterfordgoodfellows@gmail.com. A lot of them can be addressed just by reading the Facebook page. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sutton. So, so glad you shared that information with us and, um, again, I, we've had some, we're so lucky here in Waterford, it's such amazing community partner, so.
Yeah, we didn't have us the turnout last year, so I just kind of want to get the word out. I want everybody to share the information if they would, please, and again, the resources that they can, can get the information from.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, anyone with questions, waterfordgoodfellows@gmail.com. Okay, colleagues, let's move on now to our Board of Education reports. Are there any board reports this evening? Member Jocelyn?
I'm the only one that ever has board reports. All right. Youth Assistance, this weekend is the annual Battle of the Badges, so please come and donate your shoes, uh, on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It will be the Police Department versus the Fire Department. They will be located right next to the fire station, um, off of Crescent Lake Road. So come and pick your favorite or, you know, bring in even amount and divide them between the two, which is what I usually do. The Waterford Youth Assistance Third Annual Pumpkin Contest Decorating Contest is going to start here pretty quick. Uh, you need to email a picture of your carved or painted pumpkin to the Waterford Youth Assistance. This is on their page. I, uh, screen chatted this before, um, earlier today, so you can go on there and find out all this information. Everything needs to be into them by November 1st. They extended it this year because they ended it early last year and I said, well, if it's warm, some people won't get their pumpkin till like, I mean, Halloween's, I think, on Saturday this year, so some people won't get their, their Sunday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah. So people probably won't get their pumpkin till like Saturday or Sunday, so. They have different categories, kindergarten through third grade, fourth grade through fifth grade, sixth through eighth, and nine through 12th. So I'm anxious to see some of our art students, uh, do some cool pumpkins. And they will get a $25 gift card if they win. Uh, again, Youth Assistance is still collecting shoes. We are almost there. This is our fourth annual event. If you cannot go to the Battle of the Badges this weekend, you can drop your shoes off at Crave Nutrition on Pontiac Lake Road, Michigan United Credit Union on Pontiac Lake Road, or Dixie Highway, Recovered Chiropractic, um, which is across the street from Kroger, St. Andrews Episcopalia Church, Waterford Chamber of Commerce, Waterford Parks and Rec, Central United Methodist Church, Waterford Senior Center, and the Waterford Township Office. There's a box right out here in the hallway, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Member Jocelyn. You're really good at the board updates.
I'm the only one that ever has. It's, it's, I don't understand what to do.
What other Board of Education reports do we have this evening? Just really quick, uh, Member Donahue and I are going to be headed to the M A S B Conference next month and, um, they, we'll share some information they have for the delegates, uh, delegates convention in case someone wants to sort of read those with M A S Bs working on and offer any input. Really quick one to shout out for the E L D Department and our, our wonderful staff over there at Donaldson. Tonight they're having the Hispanic Heritage Celebration Night. Um, I got a couple of pictures and a couple of videos of mariachi bands and the great food they're having over there, so it's a really wonderful event, so. That's it for me. Any other board reports this evening? Okay, Superintendent Lindberg.
Thank you, President Ristich. In recognition of America's Safe Schools Week, which takes place this week, Oakland County Prosecutor Karen McDonald is visiting with our county students and, uh, she gave us a call and wanted to visit with our students, so today we had the pleasure of welcoming her to Mason Middle School to visit some of our eighth grade social studies classes. She shared some of the work that she is doing as prosecutor to keep kids safe, both inside and outside of school. We appreciate her time and I enjoyed visiting with her and sharing some of the initiatives we're doing to keep our students and staff safe as well. Kettering's Band Choirs and Orchestra performed haunting harmonies on Wednesday evening, but Mott High School is still up-scheduled to host a trunk and treat event on October 25th at 5:30 with the Halloween Spooktacular Concert to follow at 7:00 p.m. That's next Wednesday at 5:30. These community events not only showcase our incredible performing arts programs and our talented students, but they get everyone excited for Halloween. Now, following ad, and in a month or two later, the Holiday Extravaganza announced that Waterford High School seniors have a chance to win a $5,000 scholarship by submitting an essay about how they have made a difference in their community. The Fran Anderson Legacy Fund will award four, that's four $5,000 scholarships to one student in Waterford, White Lake, Pontiac, and Auburn Hills. The deadline is November 1st and the scholarship recipient, uh, for their community will be awarded the Junior Grand Marshall for the Holiday Extravaganza Parade in downtown Pontiac on December 2nd. Visit holidayextravaganza.org for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lindberg. Um, thank you everyone for being here tonight. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you to our central admin staff. Seeing no further business, tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.